Good evening, everyone. It's seven o'clock. We'll call this meeting a war. Our first order of business is to make an invocation. And we have Pastor Andy Stalow here with Bridge Church. So Pastor, we appreciate you doing that. And after that, we'll have a prayer. If you would, please stand. We appreciate you joining us.
Yeah, thank you for having me here tonight. And I did want to say, for all of you who were rooting for the folks at the ballgame tonight, those who want me to pray for Clemson, I'd be happy to. Those out of Alabama, God will forgive you.
Don't tigers.
Father, we do thank you so much for this new year, blank slate, and new opportunities. Lord, I pray for the mayor, and councilmen, and the ladies and gentlemen that are here tonight. Lord, we just ask for your guidance and for your direction. We pray, God, that you order our steps, and our thoughts, and our discussion tonight, and that as we look to what is best for the city of Goldsboro, and those that live within the city, and those that live in the county, God, we just ask you to help us be mindful of that. And we want your perfect will accomplished, God. So guide everything that is done here tonight. And we don't come with a plan. We ask you to give us the plan, and then bless that, and bless us as we carry it out. We thank you for that, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Andy. I do want to take a minute just to thank you and the Bridge Church for the outreach you do in our community. I know, I work close with a couple of your associate pastors, and they're in this community big time, and the church is. And we do appreciate that. It does make a difference.
It's our honor. Thank you so much.
All right, we'll do a prayer of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call?
Mayor Allen.
Here.
Mayor President Hawley.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Stevens.
Here.
Councilmember Foster.
Present.
Councilmember Ham.
Here.
Councilmember Ray.
Here. We're all here. Next, we have the approval of the minutes of the work session of the regular meeting of December 3, 2018, for adoption.
Move to adopt the minutes from December 3.
Thanks. Any discussion? All favoritists right hand. Protestants likewise. Minutes are passed. Presentations, we have none. Public hearings, we have none. Public comment period, this is the time anybody in the audience can come up and speak for up to three minutes. So if anybody would like to speak, you're more than welcome to come. Come on, Mr. Martin. Good evening, sir.
Councilmembers.
Good evening.
While I was a member of the Recreation Advisory Commission, I reviewed Parkson Recreation budget reports, and noticed that over the past nine fiscal years, park recreation expenses increased by over $1 million. I also noticed during that same time frame that the golf course expenses declined by over $250,000. Since Parkson Recreation didn't add any new parks or recreation centers, and the golf course didn't reduce any of the eighteen holes, I decided to drill down the expenses for parks, recreation, and golf course by line item, from the financial department's budget reports, and from the reports of financial orders submitted by the city's accounting firm. The study showed that expenses incurred for the golf course were moved improperly, and perhaps unlawfully, or unlawful, from the golf course budget and added to parks and recreation budget, especially for the periods from fiscal year 2012 to 2017. What you have received is a copy of my report that provides the support and data for the conclusions I reached. The report has a lot of numbers, and it would take more than the three minutes I have to explain all the indicators I found. However, I suggest that you take a quick look at exhibit three, on page five of seven, where there are big charts that show the decline of the golf course expenses and the decrease of parkson recreation expenses. On page one of seven, you will see a list of trends that support my conclusion that expenses incurred for the golf course were moved improperly, and perhaps unlawfully, from the golf course budget and added to parks and recreation budgets. Based on these findings, the fact that these abnormalities were not discovered and reported to the city council by the persons and organizations overseeing and auditing the city's finances, and because of recent retirements and resignations of key city officials, I strongly recommend and advocate the city council promptly arrange for an independent forensic audit, not only of the financials for parks and recreation and the golf course, but also the finances of the other city departments. If you have any questions, happy to entertain.
I know there are a couple of questions. I'm sort of trying to look over this, because it's kind of sort of fast, so give me just a minute.
That's a lot of numbers.
Yes, it is. It is. And I think it's going to take time to really look over this. But you were saying, what year, you said that there was a year where the Parkson Recs went up over $1 million, and Paul went up over $1 million, but the golf course went down $200,000?
Over the course of nine fiscal years. Those fiscal years, I believe, start at 2007, I believe, run through.
Twenty-eight. Okay, okay.
Because we have not yet received a reported report for fiscal years that ended at the end of June 2018. That is coming out, I believe, shortly. And I am looking, waiting anxiously to see what that has to report. So I can also add those numbers in.
So I think a couple of things. First off, let us take what you're saying, and let us digest it through our staff, because there could be some logical things, like, for example, I know that janitorial services have been, the salaries have been moved to Parkson Recs a couple of years ago. But I don't know exactly when that happened, but that would have fixed it. So there may be some logical things that explain some of this, and there may not be. But I think, since we just got this, let us have a little bit of time to look through it, the councils, the staff, and we will come back, and come with an answer of right or wrong. This is what it is. And then we can kind of have conversation from there.
I have some specific situations that indicate where.
Are they in here, or is that another conversation?
Oh, if you want the specifics, I would give you those separately.
Do you have, we would want specifics if you have them. If you can get, if you could let Melissa, and we know how to get in touch with Mr. Martin, right? So I think it's only fair that if you have specifics, you let us have them, and let us study those. I mean, I want to, while we're looking, let's look at everything.
In the report, I did indicate some of those, which involve employees who are working for the golf course, who are actually on parks and recreation.
Okay. So I think we need to drill down into that. But anything you can do to help us substantiate what you're trying to say here, I think is good, because that gives us the whole thing to look at. But we'll have more conversation in specifics with you. We'll definitely reach out and do that.
Another question from Mr. Martin. I don't know if you know anything about this. And I don't know if you saw it in your reports, but I received an email from a gentleman at the golf course about, he was doing volunteer work, and he never got a salary, but then he got a W-2, saying that he got paid to do this work. I don't know if you noticed anything where, or something, anything like that within these numbers, or anything to be?
No. I heard of that, what was happening there at the golf course, as far as the volunteers who were receiving instead of pay, the use of golf carts, and that, I think, a complaint was filed, and it was determined that they should have been reporting those benefits that they were receiving, because they weren't actually doing that for nothing. And they got hit with the tax W-2 forms or something, and were very upset about that, I understand.
So that would be another reason for, it's separate, but still, it's still an issue at the golf course as well.
I'm not familiar with all the golf course situations. I do attend some of their meetings. And I do know that the golf course committee is doing, I believe, what their purpose is, and that is to keep the golf course going, and working, and improving. But unfortunately, as I reported previously, that's, those expenses that are going above the revenue that's coming through is really taxing on the city to the extent of close to $200,000 a year, if you average it out over the last nine years. And that's in the report. That's on exhibit number one. You can see the amount of losses that the city's actually sustained.
Yes, if I understand that, these are all our numbers from our audits, and you basically interpolate them to make yours back, right?
Exactly. Look at actuals.
Numbers from our.
And also, I looked at some of the budget numbers, because I wanted to see how close the budget was, what the actual order was. So I believe on one of those forms, there's also a comparison that looks at that also.
Do you have a, I mean, I know you said you were going to give us some information as well. So are you, I know you asked for the independent audit. You okay with holding off on that until we get your information, and then they look over all of this?
I'm sure that you would want to take a look at this, and see it, and check it out, and make certain that I didn't transpose any numbers or anything. And I've looked at it a number of times, you know, because there is that possibility, and I'm not hurting. But this is what I see. And also, what I have experienced, because I've discussed it with some of the people at the golf course, where I used to be a member, and some of them ended up being in Parkson Recreation's organization chart, which we finally, at Recreation Advisory Commission, were able to get from the former director of Parkson Recreation.
All right. Well, let us, give us a full of the time, and then we'll respond back to you. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next.
So gentlemen, we're just, you're going to give about two weeks' time next council meeting, to come back to this?
I think, I mean, it depends on whatever.
It'll probably take more like 30 days, I guess, because, you know, we don't have the K in place right now. It's just going to take a little bit longer.
Good evening, sir.
How are you?
Good evening, council. How are y'all doing tonight?
Good evening, sir.
And I will make this a short presentation, and I may just go back and sit again tonight myself. And I am a Clemson fan. Look, my name is Larry Dawson. I'm a member of the Dillard-Goldsboro Alumni Association. I'm also a member of the National Dillard-Goldsboro Alumni, and also a newly elected member of the board for the Dillard-Goldsboro Alumni. And I have been chosen to chairperson of a fundraising committee for the Dillard-Goldsboro Alumni. This will be my first fundraiser for this organization. And what it is, is a presentation for the celebration of the life of the late Dr. Martin Luther King. It will be held January 21, 2019, at 11:00 to 2:00 PM. And I'm inviting each one of you gentlemen to come and celebrate with us, and have a great evening. Together, we have an outstanding speaker. His name is Ken Spaulding, Attorney Ken Spaulding, who's also on the House of Representatives for six years. His family used to own the North Carolina Wilderness Choice Company in Durham, North Carolina. And a surprise to some, he was also on the Alan Shapiro Defense Team for O.J. Simpson. A lot of people didn't know that, along with John Carney. So I'm extending this invitation for you guys to come and enjoy the festivities with us on that day. And dinner will be served.
Mr. Dawson, I do want to let you know that we also have that same day, our annual Martin Luther King lunching at 12:00. So we may have to come visit you, but there's going to be something, we have to be there. That's a city function. So just be sure you know that.
I certainly appreciate that visit. And there's a lot going on in Goldsboro and in Wayne County that particular day.
That's right.
And if we can attend our event, hey, man, we would greatly appreciate it.
Well, thank you for sharing this with us.
Thank you.
That's a lot, sir.
Y'all have a good one.
Thank you, gentlemen. Next. Anybody else want to speak?
Yes, sir. Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
These are just a few things that warm my mind. I watch the city council meetings online, and it was just something I was hoping I could read to you, that you'll take into consideration.
Sure.
A city is comprised of so much more than buildings and businesses, schools and streets. The true essence of the city, the lifeblood, resides within the people. The doctors and nurses who care for the city, the business owners that provide services and goods for the others within the city, and the people within the city who contribute to the economy, and most of all, teachers and children. We must prioritize the proper things to ensure the city runs the way it should. To ensure we are solidifying our future, we need to make sure we invest in important things. We must stop focusing on living for today, forgetting tomorrow is on our horizon. I urge the council to make better decisions for the people who dwell within the districts that you have been placed over. Great men in high positions owe it to the ones under them to wield their influence for the betterment of the community. Our community, your communities, need help, and they need you to talk to them to find out what they need, so your votes can reflect the city's needs. Don't let politics and policies make you lose sight of what is truly important to the city, the people. The city deserves to be protected and looked after, and most of all, properly represented.
Thank you very much, Your Honor.
Very well said.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you guys doing for the good of the year?
Happy New Year.
Great. Okay. I just wanted to say a prayer, just to get out of my heart. Yeah, I pray. I do that. I pray. I do. Okay. So I am going to pray. Dear Creator, we're coming to you in the name of Yeshua HaMeishe, and we are asking you to come into our city and to touch the hearts and minds of everyone here. We're asking you to touch our councilmen. They are representative of everyone that is in the city. So as you touch our councilmen, please touch every person in their district to awaken their hearts and minds to see and understand. We are asking you today to bind up the spirit of white supremacy in the minds of our people, to bind up the spirit of deception, to bind up the spirit of non-accountability, to bind up the spirit of lying, to bind up the spirit of deception. We're asking you to come and run us down and overtake us with truth, with love, with prosperity, with abundance. And we break and bind every witchcraft, every hex, every spell that's been spoken over this city, and we break the spirit of poverty that has hindered us. We thank you and praise you for uplifting us and giving us the mindset to have wisdom, to use understanding. And we're asking you today to come into our hearts and minds, and to change our thinking, to change the thought. And if anyone on this council is not going to do the will of God, please let them be removed from where they are, and let new people come in who will do the will and will bring the kingdom of heaven down on this earth for the prosperity of the people. So we're asking you today. Today, we are breaking and we are binding every hex, every witch in this city that has put a spell over everything that has come through this city. We tell you, you have no agreements in this city no longer. Our economic growth will grow, the poverty will cease, and the people in poverty will grow, and they will become the head and not the tail. So we thank you for the end becoming the new, and the new becoming the old. So, Father, I thank you today for newness, wholeness, fullness thereof, and that every heart and mind on this council be shifted, be changed, be rearranged, be moved to a new place of understanding what your will and not their will is. So we bind up selfishness, self-deception, poverty, and anger. We thank you and praise you for newness, prosperity, joy, and peace residing in the hearts and minds of all the people in our city. Hallelujah.
All right, Pinky. Ms. Pinky.
Yes, sir.
Now that we know you can do that, we might have to have you back for an invocation sometime. That's pretty good. Who else would like to speak? Who else would like to speak? Mr.?
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor. City Council.
Good evening, sir.
I wasn't prepared to speak today, lest I would have dressed appropriately with a tie and shirt. So, but after listening in on your work session concerning bylaws of the Board of the Goldsboro Wind Transportation Authority, I thought I would like to just speak out on that part. What we was asked to look at today was section three of the bylaws of the County Rain Transportation Authority on how they can remove or remember. Remove is very specific in their bylaws. And what you generally don't realize is, you are the body that approved those bylaws. So if there's anything that was a question to you at that time, or if you had an attorney who wanted to go back 80 years, 120 years for case law, to make sure that what you was voting on was proper, that should have been brought up at that time when you approved this. Because these case laws was approved, and it clearly states upon two-thirds vote of the Goldsboro Rain Transportation Authority, they then recommend to the approving authority, which is the city council, for member of removal. That clearly didn't happen in this case. And what I'm concerned about is this council continually to go down a road of just overlooking what attorney would say is proper due process. You just can't act on a whim because you don't write anybody, or anonymous letters. There's just a lot of things that's coming into this city council in the last three years that I haven't seen in 25 years. You accepting anonymous letters? You can't even go on your website and be anonymous. But you consent a letter and get the council people to act on it. To make a complaint about a police officer, you have to fill out about eight pages on the website. But yet, a person can complain about a city councilman. And I just think it's time to stop. I'm not arguing with the city attorney's findings as far as case law about what happened in 1940s. I'm quite sure not anybody in this room actually knew what was going on in 1940s. But it does bring up a point, how far do we want our attorney to keep going back and finding case law to argue certain things that in our hearts, we know that's wrong? We shouldn't have to go back to 1940, or 1840, or 1740, to find a case law argument to say that something we've done this last month was wrong. And I don't want us to go down that slippery slope. But keep in mind, when you make decisions, ask your attorney. That's what we're paying him for. Are we complying with due process? Regardless of what it is, due process is a constitutional right, and it applies to every action we take, especially actions as you or city council members will take. And that's all I wanted to make you aware of.
I'd like to respond just a little bit, okay? I'm not here to debate. I just want you to, I want to be sure the public.
You wouldn't be the Mayor Chuck Allen if you did respond.
I just want to be sure that the public understands, the city council 100% has the authority to appoint and remove anybody we appoint to a board. We 100% have that authority, okay? Councilmember Williams, in this case, felt like he didn't get due process at the Gateway Board. He felt like that he did not, you know, his presentation, all of that could be very true, okay? So what we said in fairness, and out of respect to Councilmember Williams, is we will send it back to the Gateway Board, and let them do the due process. They may or may not take this up. I don't know. And at some point, it may or may not come back. But I want to point out that there is no doubt that we can, and we do have the authority to appoint and remove people to boards, okay? If we appoint you, we can take you off.
And I also reviewed that sent you forward, that I reviewed that. And that's something else you probably need to change, because the way that policy reads, gentlemen, it says you have the right to remove anybody for any reason. Then it goes on to talk about attendance at meetings, malfeasance, just being a bad person. So my question is, if you have the authority to relieve anybody from their position for any reason, then just let it stop there. Because then you could relieve somebody for passing gas in a meeting, for not brushing their teeth, for not liking their cologne, for any reason. That's the way that statute reads, and it needs to be changed. You can have your attorney, but since you brought that up, that is true. You can relieve it. But it still doesn't relieve the Goldsboro Transportation Authority for following their own bylaws, which you, gentlemen, approved. You said, here's the rules you're supposed to operate with, but if you choose not to operate within these bylaws that we approved you to use, oh, well, we're going to let it go. We're going to still do what we want to do. So why even have them have bylaws? If you're going to be the final word, just tell the Goldsboro Transportation, hey, we don't have to approve your bylaws anymore, because if you want, if you don't want to follow, that's okay. And that's what you've done tonight. You said, that's okay, Goldsboro Rain. You don't have to follow your own bylaws. We have the power to, you know, suspend somebody from a committee without your bylaws. So don't have them wait. Don't have them waste a paper tonight.
You're not presenting it right, but thank you anyway, Mr. Martin.
Well, I would never feel that you would ever think anything I would say was presented right. Well, I appreciate having the opportunity to present.
Mr. Wright, well, I just want to respond. First off, I want to thank you, because throughout this whole ordeal, I've seemed pretty alone in my stance for truth. And so I thank you for coming up and speaking, because that's very brave of you. Most people aren't coming up and saying, hey, what they did was wrong. So I appreciate that.
Back again, due process keeps us civilized. You just cannot do things, whether it's legal, whether it's housing, whether it's eviction, getting tickets, stopped by the police, all that's covered up under due process. So when you violate due process in one area, it makes you prone to maybe violate due process in a much more bigger and more confluent area. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak? Ms. Barnes. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I wanted to come tonight and to make sure that all of the council members know that of the Senate Bill 469 that was passed during the, I think it was December 27th, it was the bill that was written by Representative John Bell and Senator Don Davis to support the Board of Education for being able to keep Carver High School. So ISD is no longer able to come in and take over Carver High School. I know that between the board, there was some discussion. Some of you all did not understand everything that was going on. But I want to say that the work that was done, I think it was done on behalf of the school and the children that go to that system, and the new leadership that is at that school, it sounds like it is excellent leadership, and we look forward to working with Dr. Basin, and being able to help those students, not only at Carver Heights, but in the entire Wayne County public school system.
I do want to piggyback a little bit on what you said, Ms. Barnes. I think a couple of things. One is, I think that what happened is the community got involved, and that made a big difference. I think that made a difference at the state level with our legislators. But also, what I would say to everyone listening, everyone who has any interest is now's the time to push, because we still have the rest of this year. The most important thing out there are those 480 kids. And I know this week, I personally went up there to do a Lunch Buddy. I don't know if that's what Lunch Buddy does, but I'm going. And I know there are other people. But my plea to the community is, those kids need to see good folks out there at that school. They need to see people that care about them. And I would just urge everyone to take some time a week. You know, we all are busy, but what you can do to make a difference in that school and those children, I think, is to go support Dr. Basin, and support those teachers out there, and all the people out there working hard. Because she is pumped up. She, you know, she wants to go. But she needs the community's support. I know they're starting a parent teacher organization type thing, and I hope people, the parents will get involved in that, because it's going to take the community to move that school. And then, to me, that's our roadmap, to go work with and help Dillard, North Drive, you know, any of the interstate schools that need it. But I think Carver Heights would be a great test school for our community to figure out how to go. So I encourage anyone, anyone. I know you're already doing it, but there are a lot of folks that are sitting back and not, and that community and that school needs help. So I would just encourage anyone to be involved. And you fill out the form online. It takes about two minutes. It's not hard.
Exactly.
Okay? Thank you, Ms. Barnes. Anybody else? Anybody else? All right. We're going to close the public comment period. Thank you, everybody, for the comments. And presentations, we have none. I mean, I'm sorry, I'm going the wrong way. Consent agenda.
Mayor, City Council presented for your consideration of Consent Agenda Items B through E.
Move to adopt Consent Agenda Items B through E.
Second. Any discussion? Local?
Mayor Allen.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor President Hawley.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Councilmember Ham.
Yes.
Councilmember Foster.
Yes.
Councilmember Ray.
Yes. All right. Consent.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Hagan?
Yes.
Councilmember Moser?
Yes.
Councilmember Ray?
Yes. All right, consent agenda's passed, I have required into this direction, we have none in City Manager's Report?
I don't have a report tonight, Mr. Moore.
All right, we'll start, how about Mr. Williams, we'll start with you this evening.
No comment.
All right.
Let's proceed.
What to say, what to say? I hope everyone had a wonderful and, um, happy holiday season, um, I pray everyone was safe, and I just want to just reiterate some things that, uh, Mr. Joey had put into paper, um, one, yeah, I am, I know I've always been an artist, and I will always be that way, so there are some people that's like, oh, you're running this and that, or you're going to run, I'm like, no, I've always been an artist, and I always will be that, so whether I run, I run again for office, or what I choose to do in my future, that's where my heart will always lie, and that's what I will always do. Now, as far as the schools go, I have an issue with, I guess, Wayne County Public Schools, and I think a lot of parents have issues with Wayne County Public Schools, but I do not believe that that is the end-all, be-all thing of the issue with, with the way the school system is going. I believe that we have new help and a new hope for our schools that are failing, and with all the efforts that I can muster, and everyone I can call throughout the whole United States that I do know, I will find a way, working with the county, and we all work peacefully, we work, and we find a way to bring an actual art school and that, those types of things in that manner, to, you know, bless you, to this area of Wayne County, because I, over the holidays, or actually right before the holiday season, I got a, got a dreadful phone call from a parent saying that they were taking arts out of Wayne County Public Schools, and I was like, why would that be? And she was like, my child loves that, my child does this, she's into arts, she's into dramas, she, she's all into this thing, but they're taking those things from our children, which accelerate the mind, and those types of things should never be taken from any child, from any human being, so I pledge to every citizen of Wayne County and of cities of Gosbur, I will find a way to bring our art school to this area that will focus on those aspects of the world, and also the philosophy of using your mind for other purposes instead of, I guess, how's it, getting yourself into trouble. So we're going to work on that, and that's one of my biggest efforts for this year, and it more likely will go on, and I pray it will go on even after I'm either not on this council or wherever I go to choose to go, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Broadway?
No comment, sir.
Ms. Smith?
No comment.
Ms. Moore?
No comment.
Ms. Ray?
No comment.
Well, the only thing I just want to remind, as you've already heard it tonight, but I just want to be sure anybody that might have came in late, is, um, we have two big events coming up on, uh, January twenty-first, we have the event at the Dillard Alumni at HD Bound Hall, which you heard Mr. Spaulding talk about tonight, and, uh, Kenneth, Dr. Kenneth Spaulding speaking, and that's from eleven to two, and then we also have the city, our thirty-first annual Martin Luther, Martin Luther King Luncheon, and Representative Nikki Mashal is going to speak at this one, and this is at twelve o'clock same day, so people will have to pick how to get to vote events, I hope, but, but we, hopefully they can do that, and this is at the First PH Church, so just want to remind everybody that that is coming up in a couple of weeks, because I'm sure they would like to know ahead of time that you're coming. Uh, with that, I thank you everybody for coming, and we stand adjourned.